This time I'll call the August meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. I would like to ask Mr. Rogers if he would do our invocation. It'll be immediately followed by a pledge of allegiance. Everyone, please rise.
May I just pray? Congress, Heavenly Father, again, we want to thank you for this opportunity to be here at night. We want to thank you, Lord, for this opportunity that you give us to make decisions for the better education of our children in this county. We thank you, Lord. We flew by a fast summertime, and we thank you that you've kept everyone safe. And, Lord, we pray that you bring all these children back into our school system safe. And the new children, Lord, that are coming into kindergarten and for their first time in school, Lord, we pray that you be with them and their families, that they have a great encounterment and a great journey within joining to the public schools of this county. Lord, we pray that this board is making good decisions and making the right decisions that help children and help staff and help this community of Haywood County. We pray that you help us be the best and the greatest school system that we can possibly be. God indirect all of our workers as they start this new school year. Be with them, and that they have a great start and a great year, Lord. We pray that you will be with us as we walk through our daily lives and everything that we do. God indirect us in all that we do, and we give you the praise and the glory for it all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. First thing I'd like to do is thank my vice chair, Lynn Milner, for the excellent job that she did last month in my absence. I hate that I wasn't here, but she did a fantastic job. And I know so because I watched the YouTube video of it. She did a great job.
Thank you.
There's a lot of people recusing themselves. There was a lot of split votes. There's a lot of things going on, but she did a great job. And board members, thank you for the fine work that y'all did at the last board meeting. Our next regular board meeting will be held September 8th here at the Education Center at 7:00, September the 8th. I'd like to remind you, the North Carolina School Board Association District 8 Fall Meeting will be held over at Cherokee Central High School on September the 25th from 4 to 8. We can get some continuing education credits. A good time to get a few of those hours that we're required to have. Don't forget, the bingo, the Haywood County Schools Foundation fundraiser coming up on August the 23rd at the wonderful facility of Canton Armory. We always have a great turnout. Board members, I'd urge you to try to be there. If you can't be there, sell some tickets. If not, just make a huge donation, and that'll be fine. Don't even have to go. But it'd be better if you win. You might win something. Don't forget, the Teacher of the Year Luncheon is coming up September the 10th at Law Ridge Country Club at 12:00 noon. Don't forget that important event. Are there any other announcements that need to be made? Pat, what about the tailgate?
There is an event Saturday in downtown Canton for the benefit of the Tuscaloosa and Pisgah Boosters. Invite everybody to come. It's sort of come and go as you please. Meals are provided. There is going to be a, for those of you who are sorely inclined, there's going to be a chainsaw artist there making bears, mountaineers, and catamounts. So if you want to bid on a bear or a chainsaw catamount, they'll be there. So it'll be fun for everybody to be there. Be fun.
Number one rule is to stay out of the way.
And a good time will be hat balls.
That's right.
As a social thing.
That sounds great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to take this time and thank all of those volunteers who worked this weekend.
At our day of caring at our schools?
Day of caring.
And there's some still coming up.
Yes, right. And to all those who are coming to help that, I want to say thanks for that. That's a big thing. I wanted to say a little special thanks. I'm going to brag a little bit on the new principal at Tuscaloosa High School. Up there Saturday, weed eating, leaf blowing, and pressure washing. He's really putting an effort forward. Stadium's nice and clean. And those parents, those teachers, those coaches that came out and helped that day, thank you very much from this board for making our schools cleaner, safer, and neater. I really want to thank those people again. All those churches who stepped up and helped us, we couldn't do it without you. Thank you very much.
That's right. Thank you. Any other announcements? Under agenda adjustments, we will add 12A, which is the chemical bill for child nutrition. It'll be 12A. Any other adjustments that need to be made? I think we will have, Mr. Leather, will we have anything out of building grounds tonight that we need to sign on? Okay. All right. No other agenda adjustments? If not, then I need to recognize Dr. Ann Garrett.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's an honor for me to introduce Edie Burnett tonight. Edie is a former graphics teacher at Pisgah High School. She worked there from February 1962 to June 1996, and she has a presentation for our board. Edie?
I feel like I've come home. My brother John and I would like to thank this school board and this administration for preserving my father's legacy to Haywood County Schools by hanging his portrait in this building. We are extremely appreciative. A.J. Hutchins, my father, was superintendent of Canton City Schools from 1924 to 1953. A native of Yancey County, he received a BA from Wake Forest and a master's degree from Columbia University. He was principal of Asheville High for five years before coming to Canton. During his administration, the Canton School System grew tremendously. Before the middle school was built, he told a reporter that the system's property evaluation increased from a total of less than $110,000 to more than $1,900,000. In thinking of how I wanted to describe him to you, I chose a few highlights from his time as superintendent in Canton. The first thing was when he took the job, it was a two-building system. And that increased to eight buildings, including a new high school and Reynolds School. Accreditation by the Southern Association of Schools and Colleges was earned in 1925, the year after he came. And it was the only school system west of Asheville to receive that distinction for many years. He and Jack Messer, who was then superintendent of Haywood County Schools, made the decision to build Reynolds, well, actually Reynolds High School, although it included some elementary grades. They wanted to provide for the entire county's African-American students so that they would no longer have to travel out of the county to further their education. At that time, Wainsville had an elementary school for the lower grades. One of the big things he did to me was expanding the school curriculums, expanded them beyond the traditional college prep courses to include things like HMEC, carpentry, business courses to benefit those who would not be attending college. And then the biggie, with the support of Ribbon B. Robertson, then Champion Paper and Fiber Company, the metal shops were added, machine shops, and welding. And this was to enable the students to leave high school and find immediate employment, either at Champion or elsewhere. He physically labored. He, with the help of students and some others in the community, went into, onto the hillsides and harvested both rock and timber in order to complete the football station stadium at Canton High School. In addition to that, he physically built shelves for the library at the high school, storage units for the classrooms. He was a hands-on person. During his tenure, the schools enjoyed the addition of cafeterias. There were none when he came. And then I would be very remiss if I didn't mention one of his pet projects, and that was increasing the size and the usage of the school libraries. He gave many of the books that he had accumulated to various school libraries, particularly Reynolds. And as the recipient and custodian of the remaining books, I wish he'd given them some My father supported the consolidation of Canton City Schools with Haywood County Schools. He made speeches and otherwise used his influence to encourage the citizens to accept the idea of consolidation. And now the portrait itself. The portrait was commissioned and paid for by the Junior Civitan Club at Pisgah High School. The club was sponsored by the late Bill Steamy, who coached and taught at Pisgah before he became Canton's town manager. It was dedicated to the library at Pisgah High School in a ceremony in 1968. My father was still living, and my daughter unveiled the portrait, my daughter Allison. The artist was the late Frank Saunders of Wainsville. And thank you again.
Dr. Garrett, I would ask you if you would make sure that this portrait is hung here in the Education Center where it can be promptly displayed. Thank you very much, Mr. Tracy. Lot of history and heritage involved in that, and we sure do appreciate it. Under announcements I failed to ask about, I know we just, I know we just had the end of the, end of the part of the session on the budget. Have you got initial numbers or any kind of comment, Dr. Garrett, about the budget and how it's going to reflect in Raleigh?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of-
I'm just curious about how it's going to impact us on our local and state funding.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, to date, Haywood County Schools has not received an official state budget. Anything issued at this time would be purely speculation.
Okay. All right. Thank you. There's just a lot of buzz out there, I know. Board members, we now have our open session, and now is a time period designated by the Board of Education for public comments. This time is set aside for comments from the general public in regard to matters of concern to the public. However, comments addressing specific students and/or personnel are prohibited due to confidentiality laws and regulations. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board requests that all speakers adhere to the time limitation and prohibition against mentioning individual students and personnel. First, we have signed up Mr. Bruce Johnson, representing Champion Supply.
Board members, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, personnel, my fellow Dookie, thank you all so much for your time this morning, for this afternoon. My name's Bruce Johnson. I'm the, me and my wife own Champion Janitorial Supply, and I'm here to talk a little bit about the child nutrition bit. You know, as a small businessman, I'm proud of my employees, I'm proud of our products, I'm proud of our service, and I'm proud of the value that we give to our business partners. So earlier this month, the award was given to a big international company. And like any small businessman, I would like to know, you know, how did we do on the bid? We didn't win the bid, but why didn't we win the bid? And so you were gracious enough to give me some time to look into that. As I looked into it, I guess, you know, I think that our bid was the better bid. And some of the things are speculation. You like Coke, I like Pepsi, you know, you like Joy, I like Dawn. But on the financial side, I don't think there's any question whatsoever that our bid was the better bid for the Haywood County budget. And the analysis that was done by the people who analyzed the bid was really not valid. And I'm here to say today that I'll donate $1,000 to the school's foundation if you find any registered CPA that said that that analysis that was done is valid. And a registered CPA, not unemployed cousin Wally off the street, a registered CPA, and I mean that. I would love to donate that money because the analysis just was not valid. So I did analyze the bid. I have an engineering degree from Duke and an MBA from UCLA. This really was a challenge, you know, a little bit of work to it, but it was by no means impossible to do, to analyze the bids in a relative basis to give scale. And our bid will save the county thousands of dollars. Yet the process was started pretty late. And here we find ourselves with school starting next week. So I don't think you have any choice but to approve the bid today for Ecolab, as much as that hurts me and my business and the people that depend on our business for their livelihood. But what I would ask you for your commitment today to rebid this next year, okay? With starting early enough to have proper oversight at every step, okay? And so we can look and have time to discuss this and evaluate it. If I get beat, I get beat. I got no problem with that. I wasn't beaten on this bid. But here we find ourselves, and we can't put the burden on the people who care so much about our children in those kitchens to modify this at this point in time. So I've given hundreds of hours to our school's foundation. I'm asking you for a couple hours next spring, start the process, and please rebid. Thank you for your time.
On it, three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next, we, the board recognizes Mr. Monroe Miller.
We met with Dr. Doris Hammond on July 31st to discuss the funding formula. She's a delightful person, 90 years old, and sharp as a tack. We discussed a tutorial, which I'm giving, and a spreadsheet analysis of what Haywood Schools should have received since 2008, a shortfall of over $15 million, and what to do next. I invite each and every one of you on the board, each of you board members, to a tutorial on the funding formula. Since this is an educational opportunity, like a retreat, I don't feel there's a problem with more than a quorum getting together and sit down on this tutorial. But if you feel there is, then we can meet in groups of less than a quorum, or simply call a public meeting workshop, your choice. The next day, Friday, Dr. Hammond sent an email to Chuck Francis, chairman of the Haywood County Board of Education. She copied the entire elected board of education and sent an additional email to the elected board of county commissioners. Since you all received this email, I'm going to read her email now for the benefit of the citizens of Haywood County here at this board meeting, and for those watching this on the YouTube video. If her letter extends over the three-minute time period, feel free to cut me off. However, since I'm reading her letter, this might count as two three-minute time periods. Dear Dr. Francis, or I'm sorry, dear Mr. Francis, my meeting with Monroe Miller was interesting and informative. I found his figures documented and definitive. I found the use of the funding formula historically unreliable, and if it is to continue to be used, the funding compared with this year's increase per pupil of 2.33 percent. Next year's 2004 to 2015 will be 0.89 percent. Social Security COLA is 1.5 percent. This year's increase does not cover the needs of Haywood County students to give each child the opportunity to develop his or her capabilities to the full extent. My position is that every individual, business, community, organization, and church has a responsibility to see that our schools have this funding. This responsibility begins with Haywood County Commissioners and the Board of Education. Our elected officials must resolve the problem with the funding formula for our school system. I cannot pass the responsibility of inadequate funding to the federal and state governments, although each share part of the funding difficulty. I will continue to work for our students in the many ways available, but I cannot ask individuals, businesses, organizations, communities, or churches to do so until our elected leaders understand and resolve the problem of the funding formula. I shall delete the topic on-
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
I appreciate the time that you've allowed to express my concerns.
Yes, sir. Board recognizes Sherry Kilby.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, thank you for this opportunity. I would just like to share an email that I sent to Allison. She's the director of child nutrition and my boss. I work at Beth Elmond Cafeteria. This is in response to a newspaper article that was in Monday's about near last year, and I just wanted to send an email in my support for her. And it reads, "Just wanted to let you know how pleased I am with Ecolab chemicals. Their customer service is great. They make me feel like I'm not bothering them when I have a question or need help with a product. The products are cleaning better and drying faster. Also, they keep the lime scale to a minimum in the dish machine, and I don't have to buy as much de-limer, which saves additional money. A huge plus for our ladies is the compact size. It is much easier on our backs to place the Ecolab chemicals in the machine versus lugging those huge five-gallon buckets. Thank you for making our jobs a little bit easier." And in addition to that, the next day, I read something in the Smoky Mountain News that was very disturbing to me, and I would also like to add that as a proud employee of Haywood County Schools, I'm offended and appalled at the unprofessionalism and derogatory comments directed at our child nutrition director, our administration, and our school board. If a company is outbid for their business, then it's outbid. Unfortunately, that is business. Also, just because a person has a long list of credentials, accolades, and ties to the community does not merit dubbling in order to get the business which they were outbid it. I think the unprofessionalism of the articles speaks volumes. In Haywood County Schools, there is a zero-tolerance policy against dubbling in our student population. Why should we, as the adult population of Haywood County Schools, expect any less? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kilby. The board recognizes Ms. Ginger Moore.
Members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, thank you for this opportunity to comment. I'm the cafeteria manager at Jonathan Valley and have been there for the last 17 years. This past year, I was the dual manager at Jonathan Valley and Riverbend. Like Sherry, I had also sent an email to Allison commenting, "I was one of the pilot schools that started out with Ecolab last year," telling her what we had found, and we were just in awe of the product. But there have been some comments that some of the things I said were disingenuous. The reason that nothing was ever brought to the attention of the Champion Suppliers before about the soaps gun problems and things was just because that's how it had been for all the 13 years. Until we used a new chemical, we didn't realize that it could ever be any cleaner or any better or easier to use. And everything from the trays to the silverware and the machine is so much cleaner. It's also been said that employees tend to agree with their boss, but my employees were the ones who brought to my attention how much better things were. And as the people who are elbow-deep in the cleaning, they're going to speak up for whatever makes the job easier and more efficient. I've also piloted other types of products for the Ecolab company, and they're both superior without being caustic. This is one change that we've made that I can really support, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Board recognizes Ms. Sandy Watts.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I did not make any notes, so I'm just going to speak from my heart. That's just the way I'd rather do it. My name is Sandy Watts, and I have been with the school system for 15 years. And first of all, Mr. Johnson, I understand exactly what you were saying. I am for the small business, and this has nothing to do personally how I feel about Mr. Johnson because we've always had a good relationship. But this is a business, and when we started using the Ecolab, which I was not in the pilot stage like Ginger was, but I had my employees, because Allison had asked us to, you know, give our opinion, let her know. She was not out to just, excuse me, she was not out to just go with this other company. She wanted to know our honest opinion about it, and I appreciated that. So of course, my staff, they were just overwhelmed with the difference, how quicker that the chemicals dried on the trays, and it is easier to lift than the five-pound buckets. And so I'm just here to support that. And also, I mean, the first time I heard about this was in the newspaper, and that bothered me, that this was not presented to you before it went to the paper. And I don't think Allison deserved that. But this has nothing to do with, you know, like I said, anything personal, just- with, you know, like I said, anything personal. Just, it's strictly business with our budget cuts, and I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Next on our agenda, we have Mark Shepherd. Update on our student drug testing program.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. According to School Board Policy Essay 15, we do have and have established a student drug testing program. It is completely random in nature, and as part of that policy, I am to give you a report on this program each year, and that's what this little PowerPoint will do. Just a little overview. Students are placed in the random selection pool based upon them being in extracurricular activities, so it has nothing to do with, you know, any kind of curricular program, or any kind of programs that would keep them from being able to graduate from high school, strictly driving, or extracurricular sports, or that kind of thing. The, this policy is worded to where it's very non-punitive in nature for students. It's more about discovery and information for parents. And of course, students can start losing their extracurricular privileges after two or three offenses, but really, the spirit of this is to, you know, help these students get help they need to get off of drugs. And also, to have a reason to say, "No, no, I want to play sports. I'm not going to, I'm not going to do that." So basically, that's what that next slide says as well. They don't necessarily lose privileges the first time as well. The parents are notified, and as long as they do what they're supposed to do, which is to get with the physician, get a form filled out, get that back to school officials, then they don't lose anything on their first positive drug test. As far as the selection pool for this past year, there were 1,107 high school students included in this pool, and of course, this varies year to year based on how many students sign up and register to drive to school, or play sports, or in any competitive thing like sportsman's club, or band, anything that has competitive nature to it. So this represents 46.6 percent of the high school students in Haywood County. We tested 259 students, and this represented 23.4 percent of the eligible students, those in the pool, in other words. And of course, sometimes students in a random pool like this are selected more than once. Now, if they test positive, they're automatically selected more than once. But if they don't test positive, sometimes it happens anyway. We've inquired whether we could take people out if they've been selected once, but they said, "No, that, that takes, you know, the completely random nature out of it," so you have to leave them in. The results, you can see the past results, where they've been, and of course, in the one on the bottom there, 13, 14, 10 positive tests, and that includes those who refused to test, and we were at less than 4 percent positive tests. The cost of the student drug testing program for this past year was $6,832, and that represents $24 per test for the first two dates that we tested, $29 per test for the last time, because we brought the idea of using a 12-panel test to the finance committee. They felt like it was a good idea. It would cost a little bit more. They approved that, so we started using a 12-panel test. The idea was that it test for both natural and synthetic opiates, instead of just synthetic ones, like the, like the 10-panel does. And anybody have any questions or comments on that?
Board members have any questions? That's our annual update. That was written into the original policy. I know that policy, we, when we developed that policy, was, it was cutting-edge at the time. I remember that. But I do remember that the board's thoughts were that we wanted to give students an out, rather than punish. And if we could save one student, that $6,800 was nothing.
Absolutely.
Compared to what we could get in return for that. And if we can have one student say no to drugs one time, it's money well spent, in my opinion. The trend is trending down, looks like, a little bit, maybe. Maybe not on a percentage basis, but actual students that were tested positive. That's a good sign. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the July 14th closed and regular session minutes. I'll entertain a motion. They be approved at this time.
Motion may be approved.
We have a motion from Mr. Henson, second from Mr. Leatherwood, to approve the minutes as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now, the board recognizes Ms. Ginny Wood for our 2015-2016 calendar waiver request.
Yes. Members of the board, I'm asking for your approval to submit the calendar waiver request, begin working on the 2015-16 school calendars. And I think you have it.
Yes. Just I'll entertain a motion. We approve the waiver for the 2015-2016 calendar school year.
I approve it.
Okay, we have, I think Mr. Rogers beat you just slightly. You want to second that, Ms. Milner?
I second that.
Okay, Mr. Rogers made the motion, second from Ms. Milner. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. I long for the day that the board can set the start date for school without having to follow the state law. I long for that day. Enough of my editorial license. Now, we are going to return to Mr. Shepherd for some exciting policies that are going to be hopefully approved tonight. And I'm not being facetious. I'm being very serious. We've had one of these on the agenda for a long time, but I think we've got it right.
Nobody can accuse us of rushing through the process.
[laughing]
And that policy would be use and care of school facilities. That's board policy CR4. And if you want to scroll down with us, the first change, this is not in the current policy, but is in one of the many, many draft forms that we looked at. We've taken out the superintendent or designated has authority to negotiate set seasonal fees. We just didn't feel like it was fair to dislevy one, one price, you know, for every youth league, as they would be using different amounts of time. So that, that idea didn't float. We've taken out the requirement that school-sponsored groups have to fill out a facility use agreement or application, but those are the only groups that don't have to, and these are the ones that are actually attached to the school, cheerleader groups, sports groups, you know, sportsman's club, that are actually part of the school. Any other group that uses has to fill out a user agreement to give us that paper trail, separating us from that group legally. You see there, paragraph C has been changed to remove youth groups, community-based youth groups, because they would be added in that RR section, and we'll see just, just in a second on the fee schedule. They would be included on a different row on the fee schedule. We also have left in the fact that utility fees and custodial charges would be collected, and the rental fees, not custodial, not utility, but the rental fees would be split, 40, 40 percent going to the school, 60 percent going to the maintenance department for repair and upkeep on the properties. Okay? The rest of that stays the same, except for paragraph E. The original idea of changing the policy was to add for-profit users. So, paragraph E adds for-profit as a, as a group of users. We also have a corresponding row for that in the fee schedule. Basically, it's recreational in nature. I guess the poster, the poster child type children for that would be travel ball tournaments that could come in here. People could actually turn a profit and use our properties, you know, and sponsor their tournaments. It would also give, you know, either, either one of the middle schools or high schools the ability to use one of these tournaments as a fundraiser. So if I'm, if I'm Pisgah softball, I could get with a group that is a for-profit group that does travel ball tournaments, and, you know, I could sponsor that tournament and make money off of it for my, for my group, as far as like a fundraiser. The, the other highlighted part on paragraph F, we have specified groups that cannot use the, the properties, such as personal use, birthday parties, wedding, you know, wedding functions, that kind of thing. But other groups that would come along that don't just necessarily tidily fit into one of these groups, the superintendent or their designated would have to sign off on that. A good example of that would be the movie groups that have recently used the properties. If you scroll on down, the, this just enunciates that the finance committee would regularly look and approve of rates that are being charged, as far as how much we charge hourly to use each of the properties, and any kind of custodial or utility fees that would be charged. And this never has been part of the policy, but this just listed as, as a duty that the, the finance committee would undertake to oversee those fees and rates.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to put our comments and writing on this?
I mean, I, we've got a third-day review. I just, I won't have...
We're not on this one.
Yeah.
We're going to try to suspend everyone on this.
Well, okay, I didn't know we was going to try to suspend it. Nobody told me that. Only thing I would change is the finance committee, on recommendation to the board. I believe this is a full, full board obligation. The finance committee can bring us the numbers. I don't have a problem with one coming that way, but this is a full board obligation. We all answer to the citizens of Haywood County.
The finance, I think the, maybe the, if you read that literally, I understand what your concern is, but I think knowing, and we can change it, knowing that the finance committee will review and approve rates, and it would have to come before the full board for approval. Would that work?
Yeah, that's, I'm happy as long as it comes to the board for approval.
Could you add that wording in the policy? What, there, there is a reason why we're wanting to go through this fairly quickly, because we're up against a pretty tight deadline on this one. And the finance committee did meet earlier this evening, and they have approved a potential rate schedule that will be up for approval tonight at the finance committee part of the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, can I, at this time, I know we've already done the agenda revisions, but can I ask for that to be installed in...
Without objection.
...as well, to approve that, since we're going to look at...
Okay, we will add, under regular financial, monthly financial reports, we will add a section 12B now.
For CR4 fees.
For CR fee, CR4's fee schedules. Okay, that'll be added 12B. Now, to discuss it further, we need to have a motion on the floor to approve CR4.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we do approve CR4 as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, second. Now, we have a second. Now, it's my understanding we have to have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules, to take action on this tonight, rather than tabling this for 30 days as we normally do, which is our board policy. So now, I'll entertain a motion. Is that correct, Mr. Smathers?
Yeah.
That we suspend the rules so we can approve this, so it can be put in place, so our youth leagues that are getting ready to start right now will be able to know what the requirements are. Okay?
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we suspend the ruling, 30-day ruling on policy CR4 for approval tonight.
Okay. And we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Rogers, a second from Ms. Milner, to suspend the rules. Now, we're going to vote on the first motion, I mean, this last motion now about suspending the rules. Are there any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we will, is there any question or discussion on the policy itself? As amended that we just did, the finance committee will review and approve rates subject to full board approval. Was that the way you're going to say it?
Exactly.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. So we've got CR4 approved. Yay. [laughing] It's been a lot of work. And you know what? At, at the end of the day, when you get a good policy, it's well worth the wait, and, and we got it right, I do believe. Okay, now, let's go on to C1, first reading.
That change is now made on my draft.
Okay.
And I'm going to hit save before I mess something up.
And I think that's a good point, Mr. Morris, because it takes the full board out of the loop on that, if you read it that way. So, it's a good, that's a good suggestion.
Okay, the, the next policy for a first reading is graduation requirements. That's C1. And this is a pretty extensive change on this one. Again, this was, you know, a result of so many changes so fast in the last three or four years on what the graduation requirements were. And if you look at the old version of this policy compared to the new one, it's, it's substantially different. If you look at the first two pages side by side, or one above the other, there were three columns before, and they had, you know, all the way back to 2009, 2010, 11, 2012, and later. And they also had the occupational courses of study students in that same chart, very different type of course requirements. So that's been extracted out, and now you have the two regular education courses of study for graduation, and then on a separate page, the future-ready occupational course of study. Also, the wording in there, "Future-ready occupational course of study required," and it's highlighted for you, "available to certain eligible students." So, just anyone couldn't come and claim that they should be able to graduate under this, under this program. We also had to make a little tweak on Haywood Early College. They are now in a program that requires 28 of 32 credits to graduate. If you go on down to the third page, early graduation, students may be allowed to graduate earlier than their class based on criteria established by the superintendent. This is still at the discretion of the principal. The dual enrollment for credit for community college courses, this one, you'll start seeing some of the language of the North Carolina State School Board policies. In other words, in accordance with Policy 3101. That's one of the North Carolina School Board Association policy numbers. Dual enrollment and State Board of Education requirements. Students may earn high school credit for college courses completed. So, we're going to start letting that language stand in the policies as we move through now, so they'll line up as we start getting those policies realigned with the School Board Association. Okay, and on down to the fourth page, the minimum credit high school diploma program. This is a, is a very different program that the state has authorized for, for us to use. And we've tried to word it to where it's definitely not the norm that this program is used. It's an extreme or an emergency situation where the principal, I think, an example would be a student's basically has been going to Pisgah or Tuscola for three or four years. The life situation is falling apart. As, as you really get to that second semester of senior year, many times you see, you know, the home situation deteriorate, families breaking up, and the kids, you know, looking like quitting school's the only option. And they may lack three or four of their elective credits that they've either failed or just haven't gotten to yet. The principal can now allow that student to graduate with the 22, you know, basic North Carolina requirements, basically the same ones that a student would graduate here at Central Haywood High School. Now, that's why we want to delineate here and make sure that this is not something that is done on a regular basis. We're not, we're not trying to keep students from coming to Central Haywood or Alternative Learning Center. This is a last-ditch, last-minute type effort to save a kid who's, you know, they're up against it, and the principal, in their good judgment, has said this is the only way to save them. Does anybody have questions about that? I hope I explained that clearly. But it, it is not to replace Central Haywood. It's not to keep students from Central Haywood or Alternative Learning Center. It's, it's a last-ditch, last-minute effort to, to save a kid whose life is basically falling apart. Okay, additional requirements for graduation. The language that's been struck right there is basically outdated testing information, been replaced with a much more generic that just says students have to, have to take all the required tests, whatever they happen to be at that point in time. We also added the language that, beginning... We also added the language that, beginning with this graduating class, students must have CPR. And basically, we're set up to take care of that in middle school and eighth grade. But as high school guidance people are checking off transcripts, they need to know that that's part of it, and they need to be looking for that, and have, have that in their system to make sure students have that certification to graduate. And I shouldn't say certification. They don't have to be certified. They just have, have to have taken the course.
Taken the course.
Yeah. Okay, the, the North Carolina Academic Scholars Program changed a lot, too. Instead of just, you know, where a student had to have certain things and arts, you know, it was, it was really pretty thin before, and now it's a very rigorous course. You'll see there, highlighted on the last page, if a student is, gets the sticker on their diploma, now that they're an academic scholar, they've worked for it. And so a lot more teeth has been put into being called a North Carolina Academic Scholar. This, these policy changes have been the culmination of speaking to principals, several of the supervisors at Central Office, to go through the occupational course of study. John Farrar helped me a lot with it. So it's the input of a lot of different people. But I would, I would encourage you to go through it, you know, each of you, comb through it over the next 30 days, and, and make sure we're right, we want to be.
Okay. As per board policy, C1 will be tabled for 30 days for public input, not for 30 days, but till the next regular board meeting for public input. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
Now, I'll recognize Mr. Jim Francis for a report from the finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The finance committee has met and have reviewed the monthly financial reports. No irregularities were found. So at this time, I would like to present the monthly financial reports to the board for their approval.
I have a motion from Mr. Francis to approve the regular monthly financial reports. I hear a second.
Second.
Second of Ms. Milner. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Do you want me to go ahead and do 12B now, or you want me to wait?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go ahead and address.
Do 12B first, then we'll talk.
Which is the CR4 fee schedule, since we just approved the CR4 use and care facilities. This is the fee schedule that we've come up with to address the policy. And I do want to point out that we've made great strides in trying to accommodate some of the youth activities, so we have a specific youth category in the fee schedule now for the local youth activities. And there was one change that we did make in what was presented to us on the custodial fees, because of some of the possibilities of, of increase in salaries, we're going to have to up the custodial fees to $25 an hour, because it had been brought down to a point, and then we had, yeah, it was very thin, so we'll have to get back up to 25 on that, on the fee schedule. So at this time, I'd like to present the fee schedule for approval to the board.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the schedule. I hear a second.
Second.
Second. The only question I have is, have we got a copy of the fee schedule? So if someone, did you want?
My question is this, what's the average, what's the average fee for the first year?
Mr. Shepherd, I think there's a question on the fee schedule.
I mean, you know, we can look at ours, Mr. Shepherd. I thought we was going to, one time, we looked at a $2,000 amount to get them started. That's what they felt they could live with, and then increase it as they could build up more time.
This cost them $1,800 before they added in their CWO fees, and that's kind of what we'd say, if we wanted to stay under 2,000. That's what we were shooting for.
So basically, we're an average of around 18, whatever, per custodial. So again, if I looked at that schedule, it doesn't, I'm not seeing it, so.
Here it is.
Yeah, I see it right there. They put on the board force right there.
Mr.?
Yeah. So as long as we're around that number, I'm okay.
These are the same numbers we had used before as assumptions?
Mm-hmm.
It came up to $1,800 for a year with 60 practice dates.
Mm-hmm.
Two gyms.
Okay.
Five home, home game days, 12 hours a day.
Mm-hmm.
$1,800 for their fees, and 1,500 for their custodial. It's, you know, we really can't change that, but it came up, I think, $3,300 total.
Is there a microphone back there, Mr. Trantham, that's picking him up?
No, I'm fine.
This is the same fee schedule we would.
People been looking at for a good while. Are you okay?
We're in work session.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on it? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the fee schedule, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like so. Mr. Morris is opposed. Seven, one, motion carries. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yeah, Mr. Henson.
I would like to thank Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Hargrove. I know that I've been, I've been a thorn in their side over this for a year now, because my biggest concern is I did not want to put any youth organization out of business. And I do think we've got it down to where they'll be all right. And I think they'll be able to live with what we've done now. And thanks again for all your hard work.
Well said. Don't make me do 12A. Now, on our agenda, we have the chemical bid for child nutrition. It's been approved through the finance committee that we deal with ECHO Labs for the child nutrition chemical needs. At this time, we entertain a motion, we accept the bid as presented.
So moved.
I hear a second.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I just like, that's our attorney, I thought that was for a one-year. I'd like to make a motion, look at, use ECHO Lab for one year. Is that not the way it reads? Then with the possibility to change it to four?
It's originally for one year with the opportunity to roll for a total of four, based with the usual agreement of both parties.
I'm willing to go one year.
It, it would be one year.
So it'd be under review after the first year as bid?
Yes.
Okay.
Board, board review?
Board review.
Board review.
Okay, okay. Any other questions or comments?
Jim, clarify that with Mr. Casey.
Okay, the, the motion would read that the board will review after one year. Is that correct, Mr. Leatherwood? Is that okay? Okay, and we have a, who was the second? I'm sorry.
I was.
Uh, Ms. Milner. Are you okay with that revision?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. The board had some additional information that we needed to cover on personnel in closed session. We will now recess our, did you want to do your part, Mr. Smathers?
I did that.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay.
About to mess up. Mr. Smathers has one issue or legal item that we need to talk about. Not a issue, but some information.
Mr. Chairman, board, this is, you actually approved this the last board meeting, but it did require a, an amendment to the ground lease extension. That extension has been made, and it's been signed by the parties. This is for the CT Wells Sports Complex down on Canton de Pisgah and Canton Middle School Fields. Dr. Freeman and his wife, Donna Montith, have signed this agreement now. It'll be up to you, Chairman, and Ms. Garrett to sign. And what this does in effect is extends the life of that park from, we had an original lease, which ran out in 2016. We are extending an additional 10 years to 2024, which gives us actually 12 years from now, and also a right of first refusal to the property, should he decide to sell that during that time. So if you get an opportunity to see Dr. Freeman or his wife, it's a very good thing for them to do again, and will now allow us to do some improvements on those fields and complexes down there.
Thank you, Mr. Smathers.
So I'll give it to Ms. Garrett, if you would sign it.
We're doing. And we're now recess to closed session. I'll call the meeting back to order. The last item on our agenda is our personnel. Let's recognize Dr. Ann Garrett.
Members of the board, for your information, you have 23 separation from employments, you have 34 employment status changes, you have four leave of absences. For your approval, you have 34, excuse me, employments, 32 employment status changes, two leave of absences, 30 contracted services, seven substitutes, three non-employee coaches, one volunteer service, and four probationary teacher contract renewal.
At this time, we entertain a motion, the personnel will be approved.
I'm moved.
Mr. Carper has made the motion. I hear a second.
Second.
Shame is shandible. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garrett. There being no further bidding, it has come before the board. Meeting adjourned.